The cycle of the IMA prayer has always been an intrinsic part of an illustrious tradition. I now request Dr. Keeravamak sir for the scene.
May everybody be happy, may everyone of us say to it that nobody suffers from any pain or sorrow. I do not ask for the crown nor I wish to be in heaven or reborn. My only desire is to alleviate the sufferings of those people who are burning in the fire of sorrow. Kindly visit me.
As a token of gratitude and respect towards everyone present here, and to move forward the following proceeding of the evening, I will now request Dr. Archit Bholur for the welcome address.
It's a function of different sorts today. We have quite illustrious people on the dais here. So it will be pretty overwhelming to be sharing the dais with people of this stature. So today, we have a special meeting of IMA here, gathered to honor one of a very senior cardiothoracic surgeon who has great accolades here and also to release the book that's been written by him. On this occasion, as the chief guest, we have Sri Anvina Agnesar, President of Nite Education Trust, Chancellor of Nite University, possibly one of the most leading entrepreneurs of this part of our country. He is the chairperson of the Lamborghini Company also. He started the Nite Group of Education Trust in 1979 and it has grown to so much greatness today that it has so many universities, the medical, the dental, the engineering and all that's been there. Not only in the medical field, also as far as the social causes. Sir has been very active in various rural developmental projects. There are more than forty rural hospitals that sir has been running. A man of all seasons continues to carry forward the torch of education and enlightenment. Sir, I welcome you to this function. Dr. Yenapaya Abdal Kunisar, who is the Chancellor of Yenapaya University, Nite University, built, educations, industrials, as well as a person who has done a lot of human services in the field of social service as well as the field of education. He's been honored with the honorary doctorate from the Gulbaka University. I welcome you sir for this. The next guest to honor for today, our own, I think sir has always been with us whenever we are calling him for any functions, sir has always agreed and he's been there here right from the beginning. Our own Dr. Enchant Ramshetty sir, the Pro-Chancellor of Nite University, the founder chairman of Tejasmini Hospitals and Chandraamshetty Institute of Autopediatria Traumatology. Sir has been a very active member of various associations including IMA and has a great accolade both in the educational field as well as in the social service. So I welcome you sir for this function. Also, we have Dr. Mukun, very renowned cardiologist from Mangalore with more than forty years of experience in the field of interventional cardiology for probably one of the first DM cardiologists of our part of the world. He is the Director of Omega Hospital as well as the Director of Mangalore Heart Scan Foundation. I warmly welcome you sir. And to the man of today's R, Dr. Dino Karai sir. So he's come all the way from West Vastula surgeon, a great writer, possibly. I think the number of patents that are in his name are, you know, it is continuously there. There are so many patents that he has to his credit that's there. Something correctly, most of our luminaries on stage, I think all of them were from St. Deloche's. Shanta Ramshetty sir, Abdal Kunisar, Anvina Agnesar and Dino Karai sir also has been from St. Deloche's, they started from the same college and I think quite a few of them went to BMC and from there they have come further. So I think there is a connect that we people who are on stage today and also in Deloche's. So sir has other than his academic accolades, he's been a avid cricket player also and he has represented Karnataka and Angi. And I think his name is there in Chineswamy Stadium, sir's name is there, Dino Karai sir. And also a great golfer and a fighter. I think more about him will be spoken by Dr. Mukun sir a few minutes later. So I welcome you warmly for sir for the day's function. We have a lot of our senior physicians, senior doctors who have been there, who have been part of IMA. I recognize all of you and who are present here and I welcome you for the day's function. I welcome a lot of our family members and colleagues of sir are here today. So I welcome all of you for this function. I welcome the press and media for this function and I thank them in advance for the coverage that they want to produce for our function today. Thank you all.
Apart from being a doctor of power excellence, Dr. Dinathu Veerai is committed towards delivering contribution of a plethora of other things. I will now request Dr. Mukund K to introduce sir in front of the audience gathering.
Bringing down here. Sri Anvina Agnesar, President, Dr. Abdal Kunisar, Dr. Dino Karai, my, we are classmates, who has come all the way to present this work, life's work. Dr. Venugopal, AM President and Dr. Archit Bholur, Secretary. My dear colleagues, friends and ladies and gentlemen. It's really a privilege for me to be part of this function which has been mainly organized by AM though I just started to take up after Dr. Ray Condi Monday to that he would like to release from here. And thereafter, Dr. Venugopal and Dr. Archit Bholur have been very active in setting up this function. Dr. Ray, he's from Mangalore and he did his schooling in St. Deloche's. Then PUC again, St. Deloche's and I was his classmate way back in 1964. And PUC was a tough day for us, it's a do or die situation. It was not PCMB, it was only PCB. And if you didn't make it, I don't know where you end up. And in nine months, we had to make our mark to get a seat in medicine. I would see Dr. Dino Karai apart from his, the PUC subjects, he will indulge in lot of extracurricular activities and cricket has been his passion. He drew a portrait of John Kennedy in 1964 I think and sent it to President Kennedy and got an acknowledgement. And that portrait is now decorating the museum, Kennedy Medical Museum in America. Enough. And cricket was excellent but I would, those days I used to think these city-born boys can afford the luxury of all this cricket and all while facing such a tough exam to make a career. Unless you make a career in cricket, you don't have a choice there. And he would go with the lance to play cricket matches. Not unawokened to hear the teacher asking, "Dinkar, where was your last class?" He would reply, "Cricket master." That used to be his passion that he continued throughout this until the day of reckoning came in, when you had to choose between an MBBS exam and cricket match. Actually, we were all from this region, headed to Mysore Medical College whereas Dr. Dino Karai got a choice to go to Bangalore and join Bangalore Medical College to further his cricketing career. At the end of the course, he had to make a hard choice and he says he doesn't regret making the choice. They asked to congratulate him for making the, which I also think is the right choice. It is not easy cricket, he was on par with the cricketers like Gavaskar, Kundappa Vishwanath and Chandrasekhar and the likes, his contemporaries. And thereafter, we were in Manipal as tutors in anatomy. Six months and he was there for nearly eight months, I think it was an interesting time for us. Nothing else to look forward to, we were just there waiting for what to do. And then he was a very keen teacher. And in anatomy, he had that flair of art, drawing all the anatomy pictures on the board. He was handsome and very popular amongst students. And the little day when he came on a Monday morning, he said, "Andrade and the other tutor are not prepared for the class, can you take it?" He shot back saying, "Dr. Ray, I'll give you a solution. Go to the class, ask the last mentor a question which the last topic you covered. He will not answer, then you say, 'I'll repeat the last class.'" So those were some of the like comments that he had as tutors in anatomy. And then eight months later, I think eleven, five, eleven, six months later, back to Mangalore. And we used to meet whenever he came to India back home. He was a very home-loving person and he's very much rooted in Indian ethos and philosophy. He used to come very regularly, he would call me, I will meet. While after he finished his post-graduation. Subsequent years, he started talking about this subject, not being sure whether we'll make it. It was a hard work, animal lives and then you had to take a long, you know, break to figure out what to do next and all that. And when he told recently that he would, his book is ready, I was really willing. In a way, I was also relieved that at the end of the decades of hard work, he saw the light. And today, we have a book, an interesting, I've gone through the book and out of box thinking. And he's very sure that it will have applied aspects. He has many devices on the venous circulation and he has invented many procedures including implanting vans in the venous site. So a lot of work he has done on the field of venous circulation and this is his original work. I'm sure it will find a lot of application. I congratulate Dr. Ray for all his work and here is his sleep with his work. Lifetime work for you. Thank you.
Looking forward to this, I would like to request honorable chief guest, guest of honor and all IMA office members to release the book. Now request our chief guest, Sri Anvina Agnesar, President of Nite Educational Trust and Chancellor of Nite University, to address the gathering. Dr. Kunisar, Vice-Chancellor, Honorable Chancellor, Yenapaya University amongst us who would like to speak a few words. Sir please.
Dr. Anvina Agnesar, Chancellor, Nite Nite University. Dr. Shanta Ramshetty, Pro-Chancellor, Nite University. Dr. Mukun, Director, Mangalore Heart Scan Foundation and Omega Hospital. IMA President, Dr. Venugopal, President of Nandeshor and Secretary, Archit Bholar and all members of Indian Medical Association Mangalore branch. Tejasmini Group of Institution and Mangalore Heart Scan Foundation. Dr. Dino Karai, Chief Department of Ascolar Surgery, Interfaith Medical Center Bootling USA. Members of the Medical Fraternity, friends from media, ladies and gentlemen, who do you need to offer you? I am delighted to be here at the release of the book Mechanical Function of the Adrenal Tachyon, a new discovery authored by Dr. Dino Karai. A successful vascular surgeon working in New York for more than four decades. At the outset, I take this opportunity to congratulate Dr. Dino Karai on his discovery and this wonderful accomplishment. I am grateful to understand that this book details novel findings by Dr. Ray about the motion of blood in the venous system. I am sure in years to come, these findings will be of immense benefit to the medical sector and will open up new avenues in treatment of heart-related ailment. I congratulate Dr. Dino Karai for his persistent effort which led to this discovery and his great accomplishment. I am happy that this book is finding great acceptance and has recently been released by Sadhguru at Nashville. I am sure this book will serve great importance in our university library for the medical fraternity. On a personal level, I have known Dr. Dino Karai from my colleague's race. He was an hard and cricket player during our days at St. Deloche's College and I have had the opportunity to play cricket together with him on separate occasions. He has always been a child, ambitious and focused. It is a pleasure for me to be in his company here this year. While once again congratulating Dr. Dino Karai, I look forward to more publications by him in the years to come. I pray almighty to grant him good health, long life and fortune to continue with this noble work. Thank you all and all, Jai Hind, Chalana.
Now request Dr. Venugopal to hand over autograph appreciation to Dr. Yenapaya Abdal Kunisar. And now the next chief guest, Sri Anvina Agnesar, to address the gathering.
Dr. Venugopal, President of IMA. Dr. Shanta Ramshetty. Dr. Dino Karai, my colleague, Yenapaya. Friends, doctors who are attending today's function. I cannot say that I know Dr. Dino Karai for many years. He has been a great host. Everybody who went from India to New York, they are the guests of Dr. Dino Karai. As Abdal Kunisar has now said, he started his education career like some of us from St. Deloche's College. The achievement he has achieved in the last possibly fifty, thirty-five years is very difficult to explain. Dinkar, apart from a very good student, was also a good, a great cricketer and he had many close friends in the cricketing circuit. I understand he knows Gavaskar, Vishwanath, Chandrasekhar etc. very closely. And sometimes I feel if you would have chosen to continue with the cricketing career, you would have achieved much more excellence than maybe some of us have achieved in other fields. At this moment, my mind goes to his father. His father was a few years younger to my father and he was a very well-known lawyer here. A person who grew in the rural setup, ultimately achieved excellence in the legal field, possibly is a great achievement for any individual. Dinkar, I understand finished his MBBS from Bangalore Medical College and that's now where the MCA met one comment between Mysore Medical College and the Bangalore Medical College. Mysore Medical College, lot of my relatives include my great friend Shanta Ram. All of them have passed out from Mysore Medical College. But in those days, to get a seat in Bangalore Medical College possibly was a very difficult thing. And Dinkar must be one of the very few persons who finished their medicine from Bangalore Medical College. Maybe he's skilled in cricket. I think during his stint in Bangalore, he played for the university and they played for an Angi Trophy. And many, many times, a note was given to me by Dr. Shanta Ramshetty about Dinkar. In that, he said, "If he was not to become a doctor, he would have a great cricketer." Maybe other way around, from the point of view of the service to the community, I believe being a doctor is a great thing. And today, we are here to celebrate one of the novel books he has written. Possibly, it is an example for younger people who are studying in various medical colleges. Today, it is very difficult to find a doctor writing papers, trying to achieve patents. These are things which are, we hardly see a clinical doctor doing this work. But to the credit of Dinkar, he has not only written lot of papers, he also done published patents, he is a great doctor. I think these are a very rare commodity in the medical profession now. And I'm very sure his book and many of the things which he himself will explain to you will make him a very unique person. And the love he has for the people from Mangalore, the hospitality he has shown. Two people I would like to mention here, one is Shanta Ram's brother-in-law, Narayan, Narayan, Narayan Shetty and another is Dinkar. I think in New York, whoever went on business, who went on education trips, definitely who have met both Dinkar and Narayan. And I think these are very unique personalities. And I, I said, I have never had such pleasure of having hospitality from Dinkar, Dinkar Ray. But I, every person was going to New York, obviously had the privilege or pleasure of enjoying the hospitality of Dinkar Ray. He has now come to Bangalore and I'm very sure there are six, seven medical colleges here. He should talk to these students, the utilities of the medical profession, the importance of writing papers, importance of publishing patents. These are very important parts and I sincerely wish he finds some time to visit these colleges. If I'm right, in Dacenar, that would be the master about eight, nine medical colleges. So I want you to talk to the people, your success in the medical profession, both as a clinician as also a cardiologist. More than that, writing papers, publishing patents are a rare commodity these days in the medical profession. I am very sure you will find time, both Abdal Kunisar and myself are neighbors. Only a comfortable difference to medical colleges. Maybe Srinagar Medical College and Natas Medical College must be the only exception to our two colleges being in the same area. Dinkar, I thank you for coming, publishing a paper. Thinking a book which you would like to release in your hometown is a great privilege to this place. This place is very proud of you for all your achievement. Thank you ladies and gentlemen.
Now request Dr. Archit Bholur to hand over sir autograph appreciation. Or Dr. Dinakal P to enlighten all of us.
I thank the Indian Medical Association of Mangalore branch, the president of the association, all the authors, and the dignitaries who have come for this function and all the other important people in the audience. Ladies and gentlemen, I thank you all for letting me present my lifetime work, Mechanical Function of the Adrenal Tachyon, a new discovery, Motion of Blood in the Vena System Novel Findings. This is a slide I show when I present in the international conferences. I don't think you need to have this type of introduction. This is my country. And I come from a state, grew up in, I could not, I could not myself believe. I seen many cities, I've not seen a city growing up like this. And my village is well, you must have heard, Mathway Chariya, he born there. So at least we have a crop, some philosophy from him, that's why we became philosophers, a little bit of it. Next slide please. This is a school I went in Mangalore, St. Deloche's School. Many of, many of here have gone to this school, it's a Jesuit organization. I still have ties with them. They have made me the chairman of the NRI part of Jesuit Association. So through which we have been able to build a new IT college and think in Beery Campus or somewhere there. So next slide please. So once I finished my medical schooling here, I went to Bangalore Medical College. This is where I did my medical school. Next slide please. This is my hero in my life, this is my father, Kedambadi Narayana Ray, very famously known as Puthul Narayana Ray, a celebrity criminal lawyer of his generation. And he inspired me when he was alive and he still continues to inspire me today. And he, in his peak of his career, at age of forty-two, he had a bad pain in his chest which they called those days in a folk language, heart attack. There was not even an EK in Mangalore to diagnose a heart attack, that was the situation. And the treatment I saw in the museum is heart compression and pain medication, that's it. And through that, he had seven more attacks like that and at the age of fifty-two, he succumbed. On the day of the last attack, he was working, that's very inspiration, inspiring, inspiring for me. The last day when he had that, he had argued a case in Muputtu and came back. He had an attack in Belonging, he passed away. Ironically, as you said, for all the suffering the family went through, ironically, I ended up doing some research in sir, heart itself as a consolation to my parents' suffering. Next slide please. This is a hobby I had. This is a special, unique type of technique, only my guru had known. This is a special, unique type of technique, only my guru had known. My guru is Gulam Mahawat. This year, last few months back, we celebrated his anniversary. A great man, I think he had a lot of effect on my personality when I was growing up. A pious person, a very loving person, he groomed me during those days. And he taught this unique technique for me in any worship. What you see here, that white color is not paint, it is a paper white we have lived out. And when I was thirteen, I did this, had a good name in the school. So I did another and sent it to President Kennedy when he was alive. So he recognized because he's coming for a kid from this country. He recognized with the letter and the letter and the painting. Now preserved after his assassination, it's preserved in his museum in JFK Al Qaeda in Boston. And if you can go, you can see that it's exhibited there. And he said, now it is a contract site because I have, they have given me the opportunity, print it and send it to people. Next slide please. This is a game I played with very great passion, I tell you. And I did not know whether to select cricket or my career. When I gave it up, it was like falling in love with a girl and giving up. So I had to suffer for another ten years. But retrospectively, I feel good. So this is a team I led, Bangalore University that time, it was known as, and we won the South Zone Cup. And because of that, this was also unique, I was the only person, I led the South Indian team universities, also the combined university of Sri Lanka. Because Sri Lanka had no test status, they were under South Zone, that's the last year. So even now in record, I'm the captain of South Zone and combined university of Sri Lanka. And the players who played under me, played for the first test of Sri Lanka. And all these players actually became very famous, most of them you can see, Bridges, Pathe is standing there, now he's a big-time administrator in cricket. And next slide please. So what happened to me, I was selected for a ranky for to play against Bombay. I was WU and Sunil was WU for Bombay. It was twenty-fourth of April, the game, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, I had to take surgery, OB and medicine. So I went for two weeks next and then I decided, either I have to take the exam or I have to give up cricket. So ultimately I decided, wrote a letter to the secretary, drop me out of the team and give this opportunity to some youngsters. That was the end of my cricket career, I hang the boot and then I never looked back. Next time when I heard, all these players I played became legends of cricket. Sunil, he was an opposing captain for me in the West Side. As Mohis Ramadhan, Sunil Madan, now they are playing now, are the legends of cricket. T R Vishunath, Prasanna, you can name everybody, Chandrasekhar and Prasanna were in the same team, club team I played. So this type of article appeared once in a way, Dinkar Ray gave up cricket for the sake of medicine. If the person who is standing with me is Jalluru, is my club mate. Next slide please. So once I finished, I spent couple of months with Dr. Mukun in KMC. So I am also in Alakna KMC actually. I was tutoring the students in Anatolia and I passed my CFT and went to New York. I had also given empty boy, I should thank him, he gave me a seat in MS. He said, you should be a surgical here, a loving person and a neighbor. But I had to go to New York because there you can learn and earn also, you know. So next reason I went to New York. And I went to this hospital known as Brooklyn Jewish Medical Center. Since I went there, I have been the same hospital for the last fifty years. I am competing fiftieth year in the one hospital. I don't know, as a matter of fact, if you ask me, I don't know any hospital in this world, except the Vardhavila Hospital, I start Victoria Hospital in Bangalore and this is next hospital. I have stayed hundred and six surgeons, who are all over the country, very well-known. But I stayed there, there are various reasons why I stayed there. And what is unique is, this is the most underserved area in the country, the ghettos of the ghettos. It is not even, you can even compare Chicago Bronx Ghetto, this is the worst ghetto. Where I was a private surgeon and did all this research work. This research comes from faculties like John Hopkins or Harvard. This is a very unique situation, this whole world comes from a hospital like that. But this hospital has a great history. It is where the operation was operated and research factor was formed there. So I have a legacy to carry. I stayed there three times, the hospital went into bankruptcy and three times it has changed its name. Now today, they joined an Episcopal hospital and today we call it as Interfaith Medical Center. I was intern, I was the resident, I was the chief resident, I was an attending, I was the chief of vascular surgery, channel with the simultane surgery, president of the hospital, you can name everything, I have been and I have been able to raise a family of three kids. Next slide please. So this is a book, this is my lifetime work, Mechanical Function of the Water. There are so many other things what I heard about my commercial aspect of it, catheters in my day, new surgical procedures and so many other things. But this is my lifetime work, I hope I will learn from this more than anything else. So when I started, finished my fellowship in vascular surgery, I started, it's a huge hospital, nine hundred and ten hospitals at that time, nineteen seventy, imagine, hospital like going into bankruptcy in the United States. Only place where particulization surgery was done. And I was like a, I mean, at the bottom of the ladder, there's a lot of big surgeons operating, doing vascular surgery, vascular surgery that time means arterial surgery, it was exactly field by doctors. If I can work here as a month, it's a boon for me. So I could not make a living, so I decided immediately I have to do something else. In the vascular field, the venous field was left over, nobody was bothered about knowing what is venous surgery. All the more and the most, anything that comes under venus, they will lie it and stick it. Great satisfaction, that's the end of it, patient going on, ulcers. You're seeing, here also you can see, and ulcers going on for years, ten years, fifteen years, they have to suffer. So I said, I'll take care of the wounds. The noso, because these ulcers were left for the lowest in the hierarchy of medicine, an intern or a student has to clean and dress it. Nobody is going to the patient, that was the situation for this patient. So I started, the nosura I decided, you won't believe, my whole office was practically destroyed. Patients come from all over. Even my two of my secretary is left because false smelling staking ulcers with mackets and things like that. All that I could do is clean it, dress it, talk nicely to the patients and this was not enough for me. Ultimately, I said, let me get into the venous system first time and see what is the culprit. And sooner or later, I came to know, there are venous valves in your veins. Every vise and needle, if you ignore it, it pops up. The venous valves are one-way doors, you see, it's like this. It opens in one direction to the heart, so the blood can go out but it cannot regress. Whenever it goes into dysfunction, all the damage of the venous side is because of that. I came from this time. Same time, three or four like-minded people with the same vibration, where we all got connected and we formed the first phlembology society in America. And after that, so many societies come out and we pioneered the new movement in venous disease. And I had to study venous valves, how to study the venous valves? There was an old test, the test itself needed a subject, you have to do a cut-down. For people who are not surgeons, I have used folk language here, okay, please. In the groin area, there's a vein or the femoral vein, you have to do a cut-down and put a catheter and do the test. So if you, the screening test needs a surgical procedure, it will never be used. So I reinvented, so I decided to put a catheter into the jugular vein, reprogramme. And the catheter should go, that should be able to, see all the catheters in medicine, only towards the heart, only in the heart which you can put it up and down. Otherwise it goes off there because the valves prevent it going backwards. So I have created a catheter which can go in between the valves without damaging the valves. So now this method got a patent. And because I paid it, one of the company jumped and made catheters under my name, started selling. That's why I'm mostly known as the Rice Catheter and what I've done other things. So then I realized that while doing one procedure at the beginning, I don't know whether it was accident or God's blessing, I should say, retrospectively to God's blessing. I was doing this procedure, I was doing myself this procedure in a radiology suite. The patient slides on and it's a tilt table, you have to tilt the table and take the pictures. I have to put the catheter, shoot the dye and take the pictures. Suddenly the whole machine froze and the room was dark. And my technician ran to the panel and I did not know what to do. I was holding the patient in my hand so that it doesn't fall down. And my resident was there and literally the whole room was dark. Only thing was light, it was a screen, a horoscope screen because it was also frozen, I could not switch it off. And I was, you can hear my own breathing, I was panicking. And suddenly I saw in the screen, after I injected the dye, little bit of the dye got caught in the web of that web. And suddenly I saw the valves are moving. Not only it's moving, it's moving rhythmically like the heartbeat. And I thought, my God, look, the valves are moving and it is moving rhythmically, very surprising. Then everything went on well, I went home. But this movement of the valve started haunting me, day and night, I don't know why. In the nights, it's like somebody making a, and telling, listen, is that valve motion primary or secondary? What is primary? See, when I move like this, it's primary motion. If I had to move this to this, then it goes secondary because the force is somewhere, coming from somewhere else. Because it was moving rhythmically in the heart, I started suspecting, there must be some connection between this motion and the heart. So then I started recording this motion in every patient. I did five hundred descending kilograms. And I started timing the motion of the valves with the EKGs. And to my surprise, I found it was coinciding the P waves, just before the P wave, that Dr. Mukun can say it is during the aortic diastole. Again, I'm stuck, for two thousand five hundred years, nobody has given any function to the aortic diastole. And here I am, how can I guide this step? So I am now going to, then I started going to the history of medicine. I went crazy on the history of medicine, I went to all, Hebrew medicine, Chinese medicine, Greek medicine, Ayurvedic medicine. I studied even Susha the medicine just for this, to find out, is there, I tell you why later on. So that, that, that time, I came across a gentleman's name known as Hieronymus Fabrice Equopetent. He is the first one who discovered the function of the valves. Just now I said, it opens up and down, it allows the blood to go. That was discovered by this gentleman, four hundred fifty years back in Padua. And for that, he becomes a celebrity because he did, he was a hit at some age. He becomes a celebrity, he was made the chairman of the medical school of Padua. Padua makes that time like Harvard or John Hopkins of hero. Because he became a celebrity, a student from England who wanted to do medicine, comes all the way to Padua to study and do, so such a celebrity was. After that, nothing is spoken about venous valves. So I suddenly decided, thought, boy, this is a new discovery. Imagine a small town god-bye boy coming to New York and suddenly telling I discovered motion of venous valves. It would be ridiculous. So I started recording it. And one of the recordings, I'm going to share it to you, is one minute. Now I'll tell, explain what it is, patient is standing erect. And I start the contrast into the groin area, the femoral veins, and all the valves in the femoral veins, sacral femoral veins, superpiscuital femoral, all there. You can see it's opening and closing. This patient has sixty-nine beats, it's one beat heartbeat and it opens and closes sixty-nine times. Can you go to the next slide? See that, that venous valve? You can see it's opening and closing, now you can see better, see that, one, two, three. Can you see that? Very clear, right? It opens and closes every heartbeat, that means it's connected to the heart. Now, I also, it doesn't show in this, it has leakage running here, that coincides with the aortic diastole. So now this is in the YouTube under my name, the whole procedure is there. So if anybody wants, you can see that. Equopetent, he is the one who identified the function of the valves. After four hundred years, I could humbly say with all humility, I discovered the motion of the valves. And now this is established, the paper is published. Took long time to publish the paper, but the paper is published in an international college, annual internet. Next slide please. So I am stuck here, the valves open and close during diastole and diastole has no function. That is, I'll tell you, I want to go to the history, that's why I said I went to Susha the, everything, whether heart is mentioned there. Believe it or not, heart was not the organ of circulation till the fifteenth century, sixteenth century. You know, the liver was the organ of circulation. You can read in my book, there are a lot of things I have said in the liver. The symbol of love was liver, not heart, till fifteenth century. When autonomous empire destroyed, took over Spain, they did a Warthog University.
Parova.
Ah?
Parova.
Yeah, university. Where first thing they did is, they translated everything that is in Latin to Arabic. So they translated also liver into Arabic and the liver in Arabic language is kalija. That, that word was taken into Urdu language when the Bokuns came here and the kalija also came with that. And even today, if you see all these Bollywood writers writing, aapko mera kalija hai. They don't say, tu mera dil hai. That is so powerful, the concept of love connected to liver at that time. It's very surprising, this type of things you'll read in that book, if you stay to read the history. So the history is very relevant to my work. Without knowing the history, my work is of no use. So I started going back to the history. Where almost two thousand five hundred years back, a great man was born as Aristotle. There are two people because of whom we were stuck without the knowledge. We're stuck and we did not give any, any assignment to the function of it. One is Aristotle, second is the great philosopher, physiologist, Starling. These people gave us an idea which was not renewed and we stuck with that. That's why, I'll tell you why. I, I'll take you until two thousand five hundred years back. I've been going up and down this street last thirty-five, it's very simple. I could literally sit with them and talk to them, like people like Aristotle, Paragoras, William Harvey, Equopetent, I can even see them and talk to them, that's why I got an insight of their thinking. I'll take you a trip, two thousand five hundred years back. Aristotle was a very curious mind, he used to dissect on dead bodies. And when he selected, he was not a physician, he was a son of a physician. He was a great philosopher, he is a teacher of Alexander, student of Plato. So when he was doing the dissection on a dead body, when he came near the heart, he saw the heart is made up of two chambers of fibrous hard muscle. That is, when he opened it, it was empty. So he called it as, in Urdu I should say, baji, baji, baji means stomach, a chamber. In Latin, the name is ventricle. Ventricle means nothing but belly. So even today, we call it as ventricle. So what he saw around it, nothing like that he saw around it. What he saw around it is big, large veins coming and draining into that chamber. When they come and join in the right side, the superior inferior vena cava, making a joining and draining into the ventricle, like a hall, it forms like a hall, entrance hall. So it doesn't resemble anywhere to the ventricle. So it doesn't resemble anywhere to the ventricle muscle. It looks like a vein. So he said, the heart has two chambers, ventricles, and he said entrance hall. Entrance hall in Latin is atria. Even today, we call it as atria. This teaching of anatomy continued for generation and generation and generation, even after the time of William Harvey. Till then, he said heart has only two chambers. That's why even William Harvey, when he experimented, he did not think because he was in the Padua, he studied the anatomy of Aristotle. Philosophy, physiology of Galen. So he was brought up under that thinking, the heart means ventricles. So he did not concentrate on the atria. It is not that he did not find any function because they did not think it is atria and it's part of the heart. This concept even continued, just last 200 years back. Ultimately, anatomists said, no, 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 atria is part of the heart, there are two chambers. It has no function definitely because it's a collecting chambers, but each part of the heart is not vein. So now the heart became four chambers, two atria and two ventricle. Now you can understand why we missed the function of the heart. Now, after 200 years, why we are missing now? Because of the law of Starling. We did an experiment, all of you have done, all the doctors here have done this experiment in your physiology lab. You stimulated frog's leg and it totally curled and it jumped and said muscle contracts, muscle contracts. That's what the whole world thinks muscle contracts. That's what Starling said, muscle only contracts. This is relaxation, this is contraction, this is active, this is passive, this is resting. And that's like he compared the muscle to a spring coil. This is contraction, this is going back is recoil by itself. No, 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 it's not that. This was, it took me 15 years to understand and then come out of this box. And ultimately decide, came to know, because of my experiments on the heart, which I'm going to share with you. He did a, he did a frog's muscle, leg muscle. He said, what holds good for the frog's leg muscle also holds good for the heart. That's why he took his word for definite. It's like, it is written in the Bible or something, that's how important their words are. He's a very great physiologist. I can refer to all these things today, sit standing by you because this right is given to me by a great person, Aristotle himself. Why? Because he is teaching to the students, even of your students, he should tell to your students also. He said to the students one thing, if you have new facts, it contradicts to old theories. You have to modify that fact, to modify those theories, or if necessary, discard those theories. That's how, that's why I get the right to tell today. That correction has been already taken place on Aristotle's theory on anatomy. But we need to correct Starling's thoughts today, after these experiments, you'll be more convinced. So, next slide. So. This is the Aristotle era theory of circulation. This is my weakness, okay? Because of, I'm not as good as Jai Shri, painter, he's a very good scholar, no, my guru. But see this, this is the liver, this is the organ of circulation at that time. But what is heart? Heart is not an organ of circulation, it's only because, it only through that flow flows the numa. Numa means air. And why it's still? They never thought the heart had blood or the arteries have blood. Heart is also, is new and quite strange. Of course, that's why I painted the left ventricle and the artery is white. They are all end vessels, they thought, they end in the tissue. The, the blood is constantly produced in the liver and it goes up the superior vena cava, supplies the heart. Lungs drain and the inferior vena cava supplies all the tissues. And the veins are end vessels, so the blood is constantly produced in the liver and hence, and absorbed in the tissues. That's what the theory was there. That was the theory of circulation till the birth of William Harvey. On the base of this entire medical world, practice medicine, the pre-bodhi was the biggest thing. It was actively practiced, I'm telling you, they practiced as good as what we practice today. They also stood like this and discussed their medicine, talked about it and that's vehemently practiced. So we have know the history very well and become humble and in what we talk today also. Tomorrow is not the medicine, there will be different things every year. But it takes hundreds of years for a small thing to come. It took 1500 years to know that heart is a circulation. One small thing, he said ventricular, ventricular, on the base of what amount of research has been done. Took 400 years later now for me to tell this to God. So, next slide please. This is Galen, okay? Galen Senkri is a Chinese prodigy, he's born in, he's born in Turkey. He probably taught every aspect of medicine, he had shown documentaries, he wrote books, he's a brilliant man. So onwards, brilliance, everybody followed his medicine. This concept waits, went without any school for 1500 years, all this concept. Even he could not say, he did not say heart is the organ of circulation. For him also, organ of circulation was liver. But only thing, made a small change that there is a, there are small pores within the ventricular septum, interventricular septum. And the, the blood leaks from the right ventricle to the left ventricle, little of it, not much. So there's a contamination of blood in the arteries, that's all the difference. But he did not say heart is the organ of circulation. Next slide please. Then comes this genius, is William Sar, William Harvey. He comes to Padua because he was obsessed with the function of the valves. He wanted to study under Equipendente. He comes all the way and even before the paper was published, he knew the valve function. And what he did is amazing. First thing, he found that liver is not organ of circulation, heart is organ of circulation. This is very courageous thinking for him to, thinking is okay, to declare it. Because if you declare it, if you accept it, next day the entire medicine has to change. And those days, there are no generals, either the pope in the eastern area of Europe or in England is the king who has to accept it. The moment they accept, then it is accepted as a discovery. But he was, he's an Englishman, so the king has to accept it. The king calls him for the royal court to declare it. So the entire doctor association of London went into panic. So tomorrow, if he declares tomorrow morning, they cannot practice the medicine they are practicing so far. So they joined together, medical group and wanted to kill it. Previous day, he comes to know, he's going to assassinate it. He fled to France and he was in Cauquigny for two years. And during that time, he thought before my death, let me at least record it, what I found. And he writes a book, 89 papers or 90 papers, monologue, known as Dear Martin Corde. And today, believe it or not, in the Western civilization, they have selected 100 best books and he's one of them. That's how powerful his teachings is. Then what a beautiful thing, genius of, he used that trunnike test of his teacher. What he did, he put a trunnike here. The moment he put a trunnike, light trunnike, so that it only occurs the veins. It doesn't occur the heart, how does it know, he can still feel the pulse. The, the moment he puts the trunnike, all the veins bulge. He doubted, well, it's the same current that's where the heart must be coming back because I can feel the pulse. So made it very definite. He now put another trunnike, which made it so tight that the heart is also occurred. So you cannot feel any radial pulse. The moment he did that, all the veins collapsed and the vein, the heart, the limbic and pain. Then he was definite, there is a connection between the artery and the vein. For the first time, he declared artery and veins are corrected in the tissues. But he did not know there are catheteres. So it was not taken seriously, but he established artery and veins corrected is the same blood that goes in the artery. Thank you. That was soon. The same blood that comes, goes in the artery, comes back in the veins. So that is a second story, major stories. Arches and veins are connected, veins comes, blood is the same, the same volume of blood circulates again and again and again. There's no destruction of the blood and it's not manufactured in the liver. So there is a second very important discovery, a first. Next slide please. So that is this theory of circulation. So what, what he tells us is, what he told, the ventricular systolic force drives the blood in the arteries. And if the blood goes to the veins through the tissue and the muscles and it comes back to the right ventricle. Through this hall on the atria. So he thought the ventricular force is enough to drive the blood from the left ventricle to the right ventricle. And the blood, because of the valves, would not let the blood go back, regress. So the blood has to move forwards and come back to the heart again. But unfortunately, this is not the correct thing he said to us. Because immediately, after 100 years later, the physiologist just came to know that the ventricular force, when it pushes the blood, is only enough to drive the blood up to the end of the arteries. If it's only for the ventricular force, there is no way the blood can come in the veins. So they did not know how the blood moves in the veins, even today we don't know. If you ask anybody, students or anybody, they don't know how the blood moves in our veins. We hang on to very loose theories. We say when you walk, the muscle contract and it pushes the blood, it's okay, it's true, but it's not the force. But if you are sitting, the blood is still moving. Respiration came into existence in 1972, Volinger said during respiration, the negative pressure and the blood moves because of respiration. That is true, but it's not the force. Even if these two forces are not there, still the blood is moving. Imagine the blood is moving from the toe to the heart, heart is here against the gravitational force. How can it move unless there is a force? And this is the next slide. Now, now, okay, previous slide. So today, what we teach the students, the right ventricle pushes, pushes the blood in the arteries, goes to the catheteres. And then it comes back because muscular contraction, we call it as lateral muscles, half muscles. And respiration, these two forces add for the blood to move in the veins. Next slide please. So the radio, so now I have found this, now new thing I found with the venous valve motion is connected to the atria. And the atria has no function, according to, according to Starling or anybody. So I decided myself, let me develop a canine model. I went to the lab, developed a canine model and I started, like a fresh student, I don't know anything. To see what is the function of, is there any relation to the atria? And I didn't start doing experiments on the atria. Now I'll give you my findings on the atria, the experimental findings, next slide please. So right now, if you ask Dr Mukun, he'll say what is the function of the atria? They have divided into three phases. In the first phase, they call it as reservoir. Reservoir is collecting tank, that is the time of ventricular systole. When the ventricle goes into systole, atria becomes a reservoir. When the ventricle goes into diastole, they say it becomes a conduit because through that the blood comes to the ventricle. Then they started to make pacemakers. They put the ventricular pacemaker, they worked on the, they started putting pacemaker to the atria. Then they saw increased cardiac output, then there is no way they could explain why it's because atria is not supposed to have any function. So now they coined a new term known as atrial kick. They said, with the pacemaker, the last start, last portion of the blood, atria kicks into the ventricle. Ventricle, the end of the circulation bowl and cardiac output improves. So that is the function, the atria is gone today, next slide please. So I did a canine model, very unique, next slide please. So these are the experiments I did. You can see the very unique because all the experiments were done with the canine in the erect posture. Because I wanted to know what is that atrial pressure is when you are standing up. And you lying down, it's not, it's very subtle because gravitational force is not there. So all the experiments were done with the dog in the erect posture, I developed a way of doing it. I should not give you the details of it, this is me doing one of the experiments, next slide please. This is the first experiment. In the first experiment, what I did, this is the first experiment done in every experiment. It is just to be definite that my, I'm measuring the pressure in the atrial. I put a catheter into that atria and the EKG, the dog has three lines, EKG, femoral arterial pressure. And it is the atrial pressures. When the atria, when the dog in the erect posture, it already has minus 2 millimeters of diastolic pressure. It's already a negative pressure when the dog is in action. So I pushed the catheter to the ventricle, you see the difference of pressure and the difference curves. Then I pulled it back and fixed the catheter in the atria to be sure during the experiment, I'm checking only the atrial pressures. So this experiment was done in every other experiment, next slide please. Now, this is an experiment, what I did, I partially isolated the atria. What I did, I put the catheter, started measuring the pressure, I aligned it to the superior vena cava. The moment I aligned it to the superior vena cava, you can see a change in the curves, the pressure curves changes. The pressure goes to minus 14 millimeters of blood in the atria and the curves goes up. I, to tell you frankly, I could not make out all this due to the experiment itself. Because the next thing is, the, because the cardiac output falls, the blood pressure goes to zero or was go down. We can, so I had to stop the experiments in this time. It's only retrospectively, I'm reading the, what I collected, all these things. So when, you know, all these experiments are really depressing to me and I did. Go in the morning at 6 o'clock, prepare the dog for 8 hours, then the experiment is just few seconds. And then you have no time to watch it and you have lot of collections of data and you bring it home and keep it. You are so depressed, you want to see it for a while because you expect certain things. Then later on, you sit and study, then you use some incentive and you go back to do other experiments. The next, next, next slide please. So when I was, when I did that experiment, I was really excited and curious. Now in the next experiment, I isolated the atria completely, complete isolation. I simultaneously aligned it to the superior vena cava and the inferior vena cava. The moment I did that, see the reaction, first three curves, can you see the curves? It's, atria is growing out with a maximum negative pressure of minus 24 millimeters. Because it is suffocating, it is not getting any blood. In other words, it's telling us, I react to venous return. I operate on the venous return. It is so sensitive to the venous return and the venous return is low, it reacts in a different way. And the venous return is good, it reacts in a different way, the pressure changes. But very definite, atrial diastole reacts to venous pressure, atrial diastole is a negative pressure. And Starling law, that muscle will contract, it's the whole good with heart. It contracts and it can dilate, it's diastole, dilate, this is also active, this is also active. During systole, there's the same change in the chemical changes, analytic changes and physiological changes. Diastole also same, electrical changes, chemical changes and physiological changes. So this establishes very well the diastolic negative pressure and diastolic function of the atria. Now I have the fourth experiment, next slide please. In the fourth experiment, what I did, very simple, I thought, when I cut off, complete circulation of the atria, let me feed it with some fluid. So I took a jar of ringers lactate, filled with ringers lactate and I took the ringers lactate from the jar to the atria through a silastic 18 gauge tube, it goes like that. So dog is at 90 degrees direct posture, this level of the jar, ringers lactate in the jar and the tip of the catheter must be the same level. And now I aligned both the superior and inferior vena cava. But immediately, the atria start serving the ringers lactate from the jar. So it can continue to function, it never comes, the pressure doesn't fall to zero. And I can continue this experiment for a while. And you can see the graphic curve showing negative pressure of 17 millimeters. And I can continue this for a while, for this experiment now. But only thing restricts is the fluid overload. The, what happens during the procedure, the ringers The, what happens during the procedure, the venous lactate solution starts decreasing and when it comes to about five centimeter level, the, the, uh, the pro, venous lactate stops. So, I will raise the jar again for a while, then continue. That means atrial diastolic negative pressure has a limitation, just like ventricular systolic pressure, we already found that has limitation, okay. Next slide please. So, uh, starting now, I will do, next slide please. Uh, this is the, I am not going to go through this because of the time. Uh, this is the fourth, third discovery in this. The, the motion of blood in the veins also pulsatile. You know that motion of blood in the arteries pulsatile because it is in the positive pulse. But motion of blood also in the pulse side because it reacts to atrial diastole. These are the graphic curves showing that. So, so far, we are thinking, motion of blood in the veins are linear, no, it's pulsatile, next slide. So, this is a new concept I have given on venous velocity. Uh, this will be the concept of the future, because blood pressure is a very cross parameter of immortality. I have described a new method known as venous velocity. The velocity of the blood is more important than the blood pressure, especially on the venous side. There is a velocity of vein, venous, of blood in the vein veins and the velocity of blood in the arteries, it is synchronous. Now, that's why, the function of the ventricle and the function of the atria are synchronous, both have a function. That keeps the nutrients of oxygenation, not the, just the blood pressure. That's why venous velocity, when I did single vein valve transpirations, I did the first vein valve transpirations below the knee. So, I am not going to the details of it, let's go, next slide. Okay, take care of this, I am not going to, please read this, it's a very interesting concept of the venous velocity, next slide please. Next slide please, next slide. So, now, we started from where? We started, I started, the portion of the venous valves and what is its connection to the heart. Now, in this animation, you can find out, this is the last slide. When we stand up like this, atria goes into diastole, it sucks the blood in the venous vein. So, the blood goes up and the blood goes up, the valve opens naturally. When atria goes into systole, naturally, the, the sucking force goes off and the gravitational force takes place and the broad, blood column has a tendency to pour down or back. So, it closes the valves, because it's a one-way opening valves. So, every heartbeat, the, uh, venous valve open and close because of the atrial diastole. Can you show that, can you list, one? He is in erect posture. You are also seeing the motion of blood in the arterial and venous tree. A EKG timing the opening and closing of the venous valves, which synchronizes with the diastole and systole of right atria. Diastole of atrium creates a negative pressure and sucks the blood from the venous tree. The blood in inferior vena cava moves upwards towards the atria and this upward motion of blood opens the venous valves. During systole, atrium negative pressure is zero and the gravitational pressure is higher and it draws the blood downwards in the inferior vena cava. This backward motion of blood closes the venous valves. The upward and backward motion of blood opens and closes the venous valves during each cardiac cycle. In the erect posture, gravitational force is at its peak and the motion of venous valves at its highest, hence very obvious. This motion is present in all postures, but least obvious when the patient is lying down. Here, you see the motion of the venous valves when the human being is lying down, next slide. So, this, this is my conclusion for you all. Okay, this is the new understanding of circulation by the author. When the right ventricle goes to systole, it drives the blood in the arteries and it comes up to the, uh, catheteries, then it is taken over by the atrium. Atrial diastole sucks the blood and the blood moves in the venous circulation. The peripheral muscle contraction and respiratory forces are agenerative, it is secondary. The main force is atrial function of, mechanical function of the heart. The heart is, is dual machine, it's a forward pushing pump and backward suction pump. And this is a complete understanding of circulation after this work. So, that's it, uh, next slide please. So, what is the conclusion? Atrial diastole is an active phenomenon and functions like a suction machine of the human heart. It keeps the blood in motion in the system, it can bond with venous systems. Peripheral muscle contraction, famously labeled as the peripheral heart of the human body and respiration supplementize the negative forces. Venous flow of the blood is pulsatile, as it relates to atrial diastole. It is subtle and very well noted in the central veins around the atrial chambers. Venous valves open and close during each cardiac cycle and it is secondary to atrial diastole. The function of atria is to keep the blood in motion in the venous system at an optimal velocity and is supported with the maintenance of the million interior of the body, like other parameters of the human body. The cardiac muscles contract and stretch, both are active phenomenon with physical, chemical and electrical changes occurring in each state. Thank you very much for giving so much to me. Chief Kesh, our Chancellor of the Native University of the United States. The main speaker, our Inviter, Dr IMA, Dr Indranath. Our President, Dr Vaidya Mokal, Secretary, Dr Achinam. Yeah, you see, our Inviters who have come from different parts of the country and I see even lots of compliment, Canada and his boy and their colleagues. It's indeed my privilege to be a part of this program by the fact it is unique, that I haven't seen any IMA meeting with two Chancellors of the university attending this particular function of any IMA. I would like a small story which happened in a village. You know, there are no rains in that particular village and all the villagers thought we should have a big prayer in the temple and all the water together and prayed God. There was a small little boy who was studying in Central District School. He went to that temple that day and he was carrying an umbrella. He was carrying an umbrella and all the poor people who had come there had no umbrella. And all prayed and at the end of the prayer, it rained. It rained and he was the only little boy, was carrying an umbrella to support him. That is the faith. That's the faith you should have in our life, that I mean, I will achieve something in my life and that is what he has done in his life. And we are indeed proud of him and on behalf of myself, not that I am a relative of his, a colleague of his or I have seen him as, as, as a little boy, going to be one of the best surgeons of the world, but we are indeed proud of you and may God bless you and your career. Thank you very much indeed and I thank Dr Vaidya Mokal and Achinam for giving us this opportunity to host this surgeon from the field. Thank you very much again.
A token of gratitude to Dr Shanta Ram Shetty.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Sri Vinayak Day Chancellor of NIThe University, Dr Ena Paya Adhikunni, Dr Shanta Ram Shetty, Dr Mukun and the author of this book, Dr Dinkar Rai. It's a very proud moment for IMA. I should thank Dr Mukun for this particularly because he has asked me, why can't we have meeting group list in IMA for? So, that's how he facilitated, he facilitated the entire program and you can see all the dignitaries, the alibnis of Saint Avashas College. Each one have a very unique distinction. Uh, Dr Sri Vinayak Day and Dr Ena Paya Adhikunni have established medical colleges in nineteen ninety-two thousand. Until then, it was only the AFC and later specialization post was started by Palagula Medical College. So, these institutions are imparting a highest standard of medical education. See, if I, I may not be wrong, today, if you call Manju as a meta of medical education, there are eight medical colleges in and around Manju. Dr Shanta Ram Shetty is an institution himself. He has developed the orthopedic institution in such a center of excellence and this is the only institute having a DMP program in this region, DMP, not critics. And there is a lot of demand for the DMP, no DMP seat goes vacant, there are many places DMP seat goes vacant. But this is the place, it is for post-graduates, a center of attraction, uh, DMP course. Dr Mukun is the first person to bring catheter to Manju City. It was in Wayman DL in two thousand, year of two thousand. So, until then, you take the patient to Manju, get the hand術 done and bring the patient back here. So, here's, developed a cardiac center. So, each one have their own, uh, unique distinction. And Dr Dinkar Rai, it is a really, a very, very proud moment. An internationally renowned vascular surgeon, a simple downpour man who has done a lot of research, all it says is, it is, not the, all this recognition comes not simply, it requires a lot of effort. There is a Sanskrit verses I would like to tell. Uddhavirhi siddhanti taryani na manorataiye sutasya he na sutasya simmasya pravisanti mukhey vidaha. A lion is a king, but however, it has to hunt for its food. Simply lying down and opening the mouth, the eagle won't fall on the mouth of the lion. So, here is a man who has done a great work. So, it is a distinction he has got is because of the hard work, there is a lot of effort gone behind this work, what he has done, a lot of effort and he has sacrificed a lot of his time. We can, if you go through this book, you can see, uh, he has narrated the entire story, which part of it he has already presented. So, other thing is his love towards the Sanskrit. He has learned Sanskrit, he is a Sanskrit scholar also, he has spoken Tishaw Panchasas verses also. So, it is indeed a very proud moment. Uh, thank you very much, as Sri Vinayak Day mentioned, you have accomplished more and more books, so that it will be very useful for the medical fraternity. Thank you very much, once again.
It gives me immense pleasure on behalf of IMA Manju to thank our Chief Kesh, Sri and Vinayak Day, who has come and grace this function. Thank you, Dr Yum Shanta Ram Shetty and Dr Mukun Ke. I thank Dr Dinkar Rai for giving us, for explaining all his work. I think your experiments with heart might have touched all the hearts here and ignited the minds of the audience, so that they are also getting some stimulated for doing further research in medical field. I thank all the, uh, family and friends of the author who have come here and grace this occasion. I thank the IMA members who are present here, the postgraduates, most of them are from Medicine Department who might have, uh, learned something new from today's talk. I recognize the presence of press and the media people and thank them for their, uh, coverage of this meeting. I also thank the characters, Kama characters, who will be serving dinner for sponsored by the Tejaswari Group of Institutions and the Manju Heart Scan Foundation. On behalf of IMA Manju, I thank both the institutions for, uh, for hosting this meeting. Thank you very much.